We'll call the city council meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Wynarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment and a pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, we ask that, in this time of meditation and quiet prayer, that we remember all of those that are less fortunate than we are in this community, our local community, as well as our entire global community. We ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, and we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom and the right information to be able to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the May 1st meeting, and the bills for payment on the 17th, May 24th, and May 31st. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wynarski. Do we have any requests for repository sales this morning? Please step forward.
My name is Rose Glover, and I would like to purchase the lot that's at 722 Ash. Currently, my husband owns the property at 724 Ash, and we've been taking care of that property now for about 15 years. We've been residing in our home for 17 years, and we've been taking care of this lot. It's become an eyesore where they just throw trash, and it's been unkept, and loitering, vagrancy, and such things. It's, there's an alley that's behind the house, and it's become a place for the police to have to come and take care of matters. So, we would like to purchase this lot and have it fenced off, and use it for our own personal place for our 14 grandkids to play.
That's cool.
Boy, they multiply quick.
Oh, yeah.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I did hear a whisper to my left. If you could give us, what's the address again?
The address is 722 Ash Street.
And what is your, your address?
724 Ash.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we had it for the record. And Ms. Glover, what's your first name?
Rose.
Rose, right. I knew that, but she was asking. We're just kind of trying to use technology at the same time and find your name in the lot numbers. Now, you said, so it's just an empty lot, ma'am?
Yes, it's just an empty lot. It's under my husband's name, Richard.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay. And this is an easier one, when it's just a lot and not a building, trying to rehab a building. So, yeah, that's great. First of all, thank you for what you've done to upkeep it and to keep it, maintain the time that you have. That's, that's community partnership, and so we appreciate that. But, Ms. Press, all I just wanted-
Any other questions from council?
You will be just continuing to maintain it? Are you going to build or do anything on it?
No, we're not going to build. We're just going to fence it off and just use it so that we have extra room for the kids to play.
Okay, and you've been maintaining it all these years?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
And it's not been a problem, but since loitering has begun, a gentleman brought to my attention that that's not my property. So, that's why we're seeking now to make it our property, so that we have a right to say, "No, you cannot be here."
Good, good for you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. President, Ms. Glover, just so you know, we don't, we're not going to vote on that today. That'll be at our next meeting. So, I didn't know if you were waiting to hear the vote or not. Yes, ma'am, you can leave. You can leave. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for a repository sale? Anyone here for a repository sale? Hearing nobody else, that brings us to citizens to be heard. Jim?
We have Deborah Giewant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Deborah Giewant. I was here several months ago on the anti-tethering ordinance for dogs, and I've spoken to Mr. Brennan and Mr. Witherspoon. They were going to do some studies on it, and I just was wondering where it stood, and if there was anything more I could do to help you folks with your study and make a decision. I also, in the meantime, have met Jessica Liebrock, who has also sort of run with this. She has prepared a survey that she put online. She'll go over that with you briefly, but it shows that about 87 percent of the citizens in the city of Erie would like to see an ordinance that will ban tethering. She also has investigated the city of Cleveland's ordinance, which is close to us, and they more or less, they don't have a total ban, but it's no more than six hours per day. She has a couple of names of the councilmen up there that actually put the ordinance together and have said that it's been a good thing. So, I'm willing to contact them, or if one of the council members would prefer to contact them and speak to them directly, we can get you that information as well. So, I mean, am I permitted to ask if it's moving, if it's a moot point, if you're still looking into it, or?
You could respond now if you, I have no problem with that.
First of all, I think what we just received was some good information, and I appreciate that. I did not contact Cleveland because I wasn't aware of that, but I'm making a note. I will send you an email and get the individual council people name over at Cleveland. I'll do that today, and then I'll follow up with them and see what they did, how they did it, and you and I'll start communicating as we did before.
Okay, great. So, it's still, it's still being considered?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
And I'll let Ms. Liebrock just go over this survey quickly. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Jim, just a couple comments. I did meet with Jessica Liebrock, and we had a very good meeting. She explained a lot of, a lot of things, and I'm still reviewing some of the other city ordinances and experiences. I've made a couple of phone calls. But, again, we need to bring that information together.
Good.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Jessica Liebrock. I don't like public speaking, but I'm here to talk for the dogs. Right now in our city, there's chain dogs that are literally prisoners on the end of their chains. Putting an ordinance in place would protect citizens, it would protect children, and it would protect our citizens from hearing nuisance barking. There's a lot of good reasons to put this ordinance in place. This wouldn't be for the, the good dog owner, okay? This isn't for the dog that's enjoying some outdoor time. This is a tool to be enforced for the dog that's on the chain 24 hours a day, and it does happen in our city. I passed out a survey. I put this survey together online. I'm also the founder of Erie Animal Network, which is a community group. We encourage citizens to do the right thing when they see an animal in need. L volunteers, we run a food bank for, for citizens in need. We help with lost and found pets. We get stray and abandoned animals to safety. Your citizens want an ordinance in place. The survey that went online, over 300 people took the survey, but I parsed it out just to city residents, so that, because that was applicable, you know, to, to the data. So, you can see that there's a lot of people, there's only a few respondents that said chaining should be unlimited. I put this out in a neutral way. I just said, "Give us your feedback. What do you think?" I didn't try to influence the responses. There was a place for them to feed back with their own opinions, their guidelines, their opinions. So, you can go through here and you can see the responses, but most telling to me were the behaviors that your citizens observed from chain dogs. Chain dogs get very, very lonely. They need socialization. They're pack animals, so they just want, they want to be part of the family. If you've ever been around or have a neighbor that has a chained dog, it's barking, barking, barking. So, that's a nuisance. It's also dangerous. Children can't read a dog's body language. They approach a chained dog, the dog has nowhere to retreat, so he's going to attack to hold his territory. The dog doesn't want to have to do that, but his life gets very small in that area. 85 percent have witnessed excessive barking, whining, or howling, compulsive circling and pacing, 65 percent. I won't go through every one of these. Lack of vet care, lack of proper shelter, not fed on a regular basis, bites from insects, standing in mud, ice, snow. This all happens right here in our city. I guess I want to close with a quote. I have a lot of information for you. To the point of the Cleveland ordinance, let me just hop back here. Last month, they passed an ordinance. If Cleveland can do this, so can we. I ask that you join the hundreds of cities that show their compassion for their animals and put this ordinance in place. Again, this is a tool. I don't, I don't foresee enforcement issues, just like some of the other ordinances. You can't have livestock in the city. That went through a few years ago. You, it's proactive. You know you're not supposed to. Once in a while, you'll see a chicken or something like that around, and that's addressed. So, this is a tool. It's going to send a message. Those contacts in Cleveland, if you'd like to write it down, is Terrell Pruitt, can be reached at (216) 664-4944, and Matt Zone, Z-O-N-E, (216) 664-4235. Okay, and I'd like to close with a quote. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Never, never be afraid to do what's right, especially when the well-being of a person or an animal is at stake." Both are at stake here, so please do what's right. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I just ask a question of Ms. Liebrock before she goes along?
Sure, one question.
Ms. Liebrock, in the event that we did have an anti-tethering law that prevent people from tying out their dog all day, what do you see as the alternative to those homeowners who used to tether? What would they be expected to do instead of tethering their dog?
Well, I would foresee them making, making the dog a part of the family. It might be a little bit of a challenge for some people, but there is training available. Just to let you know, I'm also a rep for Dogs Deserve Better, and that organization offers outreach for citizens. In extreme cases, it will help with fencing, it will help with training. So, if there's cases where the dog is past socialization, there's resources for them.
And I'm just, the reason I ask that is my thought is if somebody thinks it's okay to leave your dog tied up for eight hours, 12 hours, they might, if they were not allowed to do that, they might just let them roam. Do you think?
They might let, they might let them roam. Yeah, that's-
And that would be worse, right? I mean-
It, it would be worse, and they would become a stray, and they would go to the animal shelter, and hopefully-
They'd be aggressive, or whatever.
-adopted in three days to a new family that wouldn't chain them. So, yeah, it is, it is a challenge. Chain dogs, when they do break free, you know, it is, it is an issue, but perpetuating the situation by growing that risk and letting that risk percolate should be addressed.
Okay, and, and the program that you said that helps if they need trained or whatever, they don't know how to care for the dog, what's that called?
Dogs deserve better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Regina Jaworski, 748 East 11th Street. Regina Jaworski.
She called in, Matt.
Did she? She called in, she was on the- No, she's on the agenda. Is she here? It doesn't look like it. Think you could move on?
Mr. McDonald.
Macadori.
Macadori, I'm sorry.
You don't know that?
Now I'm in trouble.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
You know, like, they went over their time that time, Mr. Norski, so don't start. I have two things this morning. At the last city council meeting, someone proposed a $7,000 from your, your money that you have in the closet back there-
Excuse me.
For the children to go to work this summer, and you had one council member to vote "No." I, I didn't understand that. The $7,000, if you do start them to work this summer, it ain't nothing but a band-aid. It's nothing but a band-aid for just this year alone. Now, he says he didn't get no answers about the $7,000. But y'all have to remember, council gave away $1.2 million for the juice factory, and we didn't get no return on that money. That was taxpayers' money y'all give away. Then you turn around, and you give another $500,000 to that cola place up there. That's money that you still can't recruit. That's giveaway money. $7,000 ain't no money. And you're talking about helping the children? And you know we got a problem in the community? Come on, now, let's get real. Are we up there to serve the citizens? Are we up there to serve ourselves? Or serve the man upstairs? What's going on? I don't understand that. Those kids out there in the streets need some relief, okay? Now, my second question is this here. I see right now, I foresee a problem that we finna have, because the city finna get sued. The mayor just dismissed seven people that got caught stealing for the city. Am I correct? What about the police that were stealing the cocaine out of the watchroom up there? They didn't fire him, and he got his pension. Isn't that a discrimination case? What's fair for the goose should be fair for the gander. No one's looking at that? You don't think we gonna get sued? And when I say "we," because I'm a part of the city and part of that's my money too. What's going on? Nobody paying attention to what's going on in the city? The people's out there is in dire need of some help, and y'all should be in a position to help these people, because they the one to put you in office. And I think y'all are put up there to represent citizens, not the mayor. And y'all are supposed to be looking out for the well-being of the community out there. The one that pay you. I don't understand what your function is. You sure ain't representing the citizens out there. And I thought that's what your job was, to represent citizens out there, you know, to bring their concerns here to council, to try to do something about it through the city. But apparently, that's not what seemed to be happening here. And my other thing, going back to the, the stealing, see, this ain't the first time this happened in the city. This been going on all the time. And did they think that we was to believe that was a one-time deal with that cocaine thing upstairs in the evidence room where they was taking it out? You think that's a one-time deal? He just got caught. How many others have been going through there over the years? No one asked that question? How many, how much have they been stealing in the city? They just happened to get caught with that Napa thing. I don't understand what's happening. Didn't you fire the pol, you fired the seven man that got caught stealing just recently? But the cop had been doing that all the time in the evidence room. Didn't nobody fire him? Didn't nobody take his pension? I think we have a real serious problem in Erie, for real. Thank you all.
Please step to the mic. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
My address? Okay. My name is Julie, I know that's not for me, so. My name is Julie Minnick. My address is 1027 Webb 37th Street. Is that all you need?
Yes.
Okay. I have ID if you want it. As I said, my name is Julie Minnick. I am the Assistant Executive Director of all aboard Erie. We are a community group which advocates for all mass transit, and I am also a bus rider. I want this statement to be part of the public record in the minutes of this meeting. I applaud your efforts to work for the best interest of the city. I know that it's hard to please all the citizens and revitalize the city, especially the downtown area. One-third of the Erie population rides the bus. This is a fact that is never cited. There are 20 percent of people who are bus-dependent. Yet, there are another 13 percent that choose to ride the bus for convenience or savings. I am one of the 13 percent. By using the bus, I save annually $3,000 a year on gas, parking, and car insurance. Are you aware that vibrant cities proudly maintain their mass transit buses on their main streets? We know that you're proud of Erie, or else you wouldn't have chosen to be in council. All people involved in the city and county government should be working to improve mass transit. We elect public officials, so in a sense, you are our employees. It's been reported by the media that there were no public hearings. Why weren't any citizens consulted? Why was there zero transparency in this decision-making? Was this decision perhaps politically motivated? When was this decision made? How was it made? Who benefits from this decision? Who does it harm? What studies were used to determine traffic congestion on State Street from North Park Road to 10th? State Street has six lanes for traffic and parking. How did buses interfere with that traffic? Has anyone looked at what traffic and parking problems will be created on Peach Street and French Street, which only have three lanes? And was there any professional planning involved? Did city council or EMTA board members vote on this? I would like this public comment entered into the minutes verbatim, and I am providing a written copy to your secretary. Please understand that this is a right-to-know request submitted verbally and in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, this is your copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I have a lot of issues, but I come to talk about me today. Y'all don't know me. Some of you think you do, but you don't. I don't come down here just to be common. I want to look at y'all's faces, because it would make me no difference if I didn't never see none of you again. I wish you good health. I want to tell you something that happened to me in the last three weeks. My property is 19th and Reed. There's been a big block building there for years. It should have been torn down a long time ago. The guy, before he tore the building down, he was, he was caught coming out of my house. My house is on the corner, with a armful of fishing poles. You know, I have a lot of fishing poles, because I fish. So, I talked to him. I said, "This house is not skated," but this is the address the city gave him. This is what he told me. So, I tried to work it out with him, because I didn't want the police to be involved, because there's no justice for us anyway. If, I don't know, there's just no justice for us. There's just, but no justice here or over there. Some dudes broke in my house a while back. In fact, they broke into 30-some houses. All they did was got patted on the hand and said, "Don't get caught no more." That's my understanding of it, because the way it was handled, I don't even know why we need a judge and a jury over there, because the police are taking care of things. Now, but getting back to my house, I called the police, and they came. Little thin guy came, little chubby guy came. These were, looked like rookies. They said, they started questioning me, and I told them, I said, "Hey," I said, "this guy was caught coming out of my house. They talked to me about two minutes. Then they went, they said, "Wait a minute, you wait over here. We're going to go talk to him." They went over there and talked to him, and when they came back, well, he made a mistake. Hell, when you rob a bank, you're making a mistake, because you got caught. He made a mistake. You're putting too much power in your policemen. They're not qualified. They're not qualified to make decisions like that. "We're not going to arrest him." Well, hell, if I'd have took a baseball bat and beat him upside the head when I caught him coming out of my house, they'd have wanted to take me to jail. "Oh, you shouldn't have did that. You, you should have called up." What the hell are you going to call them for? They ain't going to do nothing. I don't even know if the police like black folks, because they don't treat us just. That justice for all, that's a joke. We get just. We don't get justice. They told me, before I came down here, I got to run around down here, upstairs, downstairs, upstairs, downstairs. Finally, I was directed to the city lawyer. He's the only one made some sense, and what he said was crazy. The city is not responsible for nothing, but you're spending our money. You signed that check for that guy to come in there, and then you didn't even send nobody in there to check his workout. He put some stuff down there in that hole that he dug. It's going to sink down. They didn't use nothing to, to pack it down. I worked construction all of my life, and I know that if you don't pack it down, it's not going to be solid. You didn't send nobody there. That's taking our money. This guy at the code enforcement, he's so important. I'm not talking to him, nor what the hell is he doing up there if he can't talk to me? Y'all ain't taking care of business. You need to, you need to take a better look at what you're doing down here. These peoples don't even know how to talk to black folks down here. That's too bad, because you're going to want to talk to us later on. I promise you that, because the peoples are not going to keep going for that bull crap that's going on. This is the most raciest town, and I, I come from Mississippi. I was a little boy when I came, but when you go back there now, it's a great difference from there and here. There's more- You need to take a better look at what you're doing down here. These peoples don't even know how to talk to black folks down here. That's too bad, because you're going to want to talk to us later on. I promise you that. Because the peoples are not going to keep going for that bull crap that's going on. This is the most raciest town, and I come from Mississippi. I was a little boy when I came. But when you go back there now, it's a great difference from there and here. There's more prejudice here than there is there. And Mississippi was one of the most prejudiced states in the Union besides Arkansas. Y'all need to weed racism out and talk to the people, get an understanding. We don't need no judges and jury over there. You got the police making decisions.
Mr. McDonald.
Wait a minute now. I'm trying to tell you something.
Thank you. Your time is up. We have a full line today.
It'll come a time when you wish you'd let me sit up here and finish what I'm trying to tell you.
I.
Because you've got too much power in your police. You need to teach them something different. You need to teach them to have respect for people.
Thank you for your time, Mr. McDonald. Thank you for your time.
I don't know if you thank me for that.
I am thanking you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jessica Molsian, and I am an advocacy specialist at Voices for Independence and also a citizen of Erie with a disability. And I wanted to express my concern this morning about the changing of the bus routes off of State Street onto French and Peach Streets. I think this is going to be very dangerous for a lot of senior citizens and people with disabilities. Most of them live in the high-rises downtown, which are located on State Street, and they're going to have to figure out how to maneuver themselves from State to Peach and French. And with the lack of sufficient cleaning of curb ramps and things with the snow in the wintertime, I'm concerned that that's going to cause someone to become injured. And also, as an employee of Voices for Independence, part of what we do is bus training for people with disabilities. And we've already trained a lot of people with even BVS, with visual impairments, all that sort of stuff, on how to catch the bus from State. Now they're going to have to learn new bus schedules, figure out where the bus stops are going to be on French and Peach, and figure out how the heck they're going to get themselves there. And I just think that this is going to be a lot of chaos for a lot of people, and it would be better if they left things the way that they are. So I just wanted to express that concern.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name's Amy. Good morning, Council. My name's Amy Copper Tor, and I too live in one of the high-rises spoken about. I live on 913 State Street, apartment 903 in the city here. One thing I would like to point out to Council is that you don't need to have a device to be disabled. I have such disabilities myself, mine are mainly with nerve damage and my seizures. And my friends also, about a year and a half ago, because they saw my deteriorating health, they moved, they helped me get into one of the high-rises on State Street for benefit of, on my own walking. There's many people like me. I live in a fellow high-rise with many people who have a wheelchair and walker and have other disabilities. This EMTA change, I'm not sure who benefits it either, and I am happy to see such a great representation today already about this issue. Many times, the buses run late, and many times, they run early on occasion as well. I always call it bus riders' karma. When you really want them, they're a little bit late. When you don't need them, they sometimes come early, and it's a little benefit. And, you know, we're going to have to, those of us who do transfers, I believe some of these changes were made without taking the practicality of the situation in advance. When we do transfers on the buses, we connect from one bus to another with a two-hour time limit. And one of the things that happens is that when you go from Peach to French, or French to Peach, whichever way you're going to go, you know, walking a distance of two blocks, whether it's somebody with a disability or not, that's making a heck of a time constraint when your buses run either a half hour or the majority of them an hour apart. And so when you, you're forcing somebody to catch basically only one bus, in essence, and not give them leeway. A lot of people work that ride the buses and they use the bus to get around. This, I feel, these changes would be more of a deficit to the city of Erie, you know? These changes, I feel, will also get more majorly noticed during the winter than they will now. Because not only, as it's been addressed, will people fall, people will have more difficulty walking. I myself, I don't have enough to be diagnosed with rheumatoid arthritis, but I have an arthritis doctor, and I have rheumatoid factor in my body. And I can't imagine anybody asking their mother, father, grandmother, grandfather to walk an extra one to four blocks, depending upon how many transfers and how many buses you're considering here, to get to their doctor, to get to their whatever throughout the day. And I think you ought to take in consideration the functionality. Perhaps those who made these changes ought to put somebody on this committee that made these changes, or people that made these changes, people that are bus riders, who understand the practicality of this, who know the problems with the buses. The buses do bring other problems about them, you know? And if only, if only these things, if only the transparency, as it's been commented, if you were honest enough, I imagine, in the first addressings of this, or if the mayor was, or whoever we want to deem responsible, the head of EMTA, okay? It's easier to say, because sometimes, you know, we have people, because there's not enough shelters, they go inside buildings, especially in the winter. Sometimes businesses get irritated by that. Sometimes they like that, because it brings business into their business, kind of forces a bus rider to go to their restaurant, to buy a drink so that they can sit down and wait an hour, you know? There's both ends of that spectrum. And I want you to take that in consideration and perhaps take this to the mayor. I tried taking this to the mayor's office and got nothing but runaround. I called and went in person. And I also called Dennis Solinsky as well to his office, and I got no reply. So I'm hoping to take this issue up with you, and I hope you'll find a way to resolve this, since this affects more than one person in the city. Thank you for the time that you've given me.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Phyllis Zach, and I agree with what the people say. The bus company is taking away from the senior citizens the handicap. And I ride the bus on a weekend to go to Mill Creek Mall, and the bus is crowded with wheelchairs, buggies, and the more people that they get on the bus, they back them in like sardines, and they're across from the yellow line. And I hope the bus company keeps it on State Street, because it's hard. And the walks aren't clean, and that is hard for us to get around. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we get your name again, please, ma'am? Your name and address, please.
My name is Phyllis Zach, and I live 515 State Street, apartment 602.
Thank you very much.
City Council, hello. My name is Lisa Austin. Members of the community, hello as well. I'm here today supporting a lot of what people have already testified, and I want to put it in a broader context. I believe the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority Board has too much authority. And I want to give you two examples. I understand that pretty soon, Division Street will be closed.
Close now.
This closing by the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority has been legally pursued, but the people who are going to be most affected by this, the students of Pfeiffer Burley and the others who are of low income living in the housing area just south of this area, are going to be really suffering a hardship because they walk, ride their bike, push their strollers under Division Street. Children who now walk to school will be offered a bus ride once a day. If they're late, they miss school. This is not a good plan. Walkable communities and walkable schools are what we really want to have in a progressive community. So again, this is one example. The second example is the one that's on everybody's minds right now, and that's the plan to pull the buses off of State Street. Let me say that this is a bad idea. Our residents and our businesses are going to be harmed if we take the buses off of State Street. There are several reasons, as already again that have been stated. There's an ease of connection and transfer on State Street. Putting in that two-block, especially with our winters, is a hardship to our elderly, is a hardship to our many citizens who have disabilities. And also, along State Street, we have many businesses and doctors' offices which are utilized by the people who use the buses. I also want to point out that safety is an issue in our city. Moving people who have to wait on less-traffic streets puts them more in harm's way. There are safety in numbers, there's eyes on the street. There are also the issue of purchases. I mean, people make a casual purchase when they can look in a store window perhaps, and they have a few minutes before the bus comes. Lastly, and I think actually most importantly, is that by keeping the buses on State Street, we help to strengthen our community by letting people have casual interactions. I walk my dog frequently in my neighborhood, and I can't tell you how many friends I've made because I just run into them. I've never met them before. People who are waiting up for a bus meet each other, or you may, anyway, I'm just saying, community is an important thing. So for safety, for economic development, and for our community, we really need to keep the buses on State Street. Now I'm going to conclude with something that somebody who studied our city 100 years ago wrote. This is Mr. John Nolan. He wrote a plan. Many of you have probably seen copies of it. And in his chapter on street urban transportation facilities, he writes, "The relationship between prosperity and transportation facilities is true of all kinds of transportation, but more so in respect to a city's local passenger service." Now, of course, 100 years ago, he was talking about trolley cars, but this is just as relevant today when we talk about buses. I ask you to do two things. One is to really look into creating a more transparent decision-making process at the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, have them post their board members and their board meetings, and please do all you can to keep the buses on State Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Good morning, Council, and good morning, community. My name is Jason Brendel, and I am here as an openly gay man.
Jason, what is your address, please?
4131 McCollin Avenue. And I just would like to make the Council aware that June is National Pride Month. And I don't know if I've done my research correctly, but during the debates for the Erie County Executive Position, there was a question that was asked, and I would like to know if there are benefits for same-sex couples working for the city of Erie. I would like to know if there is an ordinance protecting same-sex couples that work and live in this community. And also, I would like to know if the mayor and council could pass an ordinance declaring June Pride Month in the city of Erie. That's just one thing I would like to say. The second thing is, on the agenda for the official ordinance of number 80, 2005, about McCollin and Bayfront area, that's my little piece of heaven, I call it. That's where I'm from. And I would like to say I support the decision to rezone it. Because that piece of property, it is a goldmine. I could picture a Target, I could picture a mini shopping plaza, I could picture industry there, I could picture a lot of things there. Because we have two great schools there, Barron and Mercyhurst, we have the college-age kids there that do a lot of shopping. And also, we can put an industry there, because there's a lot of people around that neighborhood that are looking for jobs. And the one thing is, is that that area is a goldmine. I will bet you a million dollars that if you build something there, you bring the businesses to the southeast part of the city of Erie, it will be amazing, because the commute for the Bayfront from 90 to downtown, it will be awesome just to have a nice little shopping plaza where we can take some of the congestion from Upper Peach Street and bring it back into the city and bring revenue to the city of Erie, because that's one thing that we do, make revenue for the city of Erie. And if we bring the businesses and lure the industries and make it general for anyone to build there, the city will make revenue. It would be place to call my own, and I support that decision. So thank you very much, and I pass my time off to the next person.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Council. My name is William Welch, 3108 Highland Road, Erie. I have a bus pass. I have a senior pass. I don't, a lot of people, seniors, don't even know they get a free pass. If you're 65 of age, you can get one. But what I'd like to comment about is, I'm also a member of the Sierra Club, and I'm part of the Transportation Committee. And what concerns us is that I've tried to get information on this movement from State Street to Peach and French. Several times, I've called Mr. Tan, three times I called him. I also called the marketing manager for the E or EMTA, and I requested a freedom of information. I want to know where the studies were on congestion. Furthermore, I'd like to know who met with them. She said there was a meeting, and I believe Mr. Curtis is the liaison between the E and City Council. And I wonder if the council people knew about this decision prior to it coming out in the newspaper? Because the MPO, the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which John Morgan is the head of, I called him in the morning, I said, "How could this happen?" And you know what he said? He said, "This is the first I heard about it." Now, that's a planning organization. There has been no planning on this development. It was done, but I don't know who and how. I don't know. But I know the Sierra Club has a vigorous, they, public participation, and that wasn't done. It was not done in this at all. There was no public participation. Two, the accessibility of this equals, in terms of equal access. Under Title II of the American Disability Act, you have to provide equal access. The city, doing this because of the constraints on these side streets, is not providing equal access. That is wrong. I was blind at one time, so I really have a kind of an adamant and passionate position on this, because I know it's hard to get around being blind. And I know they train only on State Street. They don't train on these side streets. And I know the council can do something, and that is to vote to postpone this thing, to get some kind of public input and to make the studies available to the public. They should do that. Now, I want to tell you, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but the Mill Creek Mall at one time had bus transportation around the perimeter of all the stores. Now you can only go into Food Court. And I called Mr. Tan up. I said, "What is going on here?" He said, "Well, they don't want, they don't want some certain people up there." I said, "Oh, certain people, huh?" So I went and dressed the MPO, and Tom Hoffman, the head of the MPO, quoted. He said, "They told us they don't want certain people up at the mall." And I said, "Well, that's really interesting." He said, "They wanted us to have the exit or egress on Peach Street rather than even at the mall." And he said, I said, "Well, why aren't they going around the mall?" He said, "Oh, the buses are causing concrete to break." I said, "Wait a minute. That's not true, because you've got all these people from Canada going, and they drop them off at any other places around there." I said, "What you're doing is, that's Jim Crow. That's what it's called, and it was called like that down south. And I don't like to see council coming up here and letting whoever in the mayor's office, because no one knows. There is not any information. That's wrong. That is, that's anti-democratic to the teeth. You've got to get citizen participation, especially people in handicapped, the blind, you've got to have them. They're not here on, some of them came here, they don't even know where their rights are, but I do. I know the city got sued before on curb cuts. The next time you get hit, you're going to get hit harder." And that's other Title II. Now, I'm just saying, it doesn't make... Now, I'm just saying, it doesn't make sense to have these decisions made without involving a public.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Hi, Laura Eaton. I'm fifteen forty West Sixth Street, Erie, PA. I've had a business in downtown Erie for over thirty years. I've been a part of the downtown community back when we had the Transway Mall. Remember, we restricted people from coming downtown, and we had to rip that thing out? Well, taking the buses off of State Street is restricting transportation for people coming downtown. You're going to lose ridership. June eighth, this is supposed to happen. The bus shelters are still going to be on State Street. What if it rains June eighth? What are the people going to do on French and Peach on June eighth with no shelters? I know that some of the bus shelters, we have problems in downtown Erie. We have a element of people that have mental health issues, they have other disabilities, that they do cause some problems. But since we have a street policeman on the street now, that seems to be relieving a lot of that. It's going to hurt the businesses downtown. My business, maybe not so much. But the people who are across the street, and they look into a store, "Oh, I'm going to run in there, I still have fifteen minutes for the bus," and they'll pick up something that they didn't think they were going to get. In the last week, I have had over a hundred people come into my store, "Do something, do something, please, to help us." The one lady is blind. She came to my store and said, "I've only been trained on State Street. I have doctor's appointments. I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm not going to be able to ride the bus anymore." In the winter time, it's going to be at least two extra blocks for them. You know what? Healthy people, that's not a problem. Two extra blocks, that's good for us. But if you're in a wheelchair and the snow's not cleared, you're going to miss your doctor's appointment, you're going to miss your therapy appointments. There's a lot of things. Business owners have told me that they will probably lose forty percent of their businesses because of the walk-in traffic that comes from buses. You're a small business, you lose forty percent of your business, what's that going to do to your business? You're going to close up. We're supposed to be attracting businesses in downtown. I called the DID and asked them what they were going to do. I'm not sure if they're here today, but they should be representing the businesses downtown and the people who live downtown. They're not here, I'm sorry. I'm here, and I feel bad, because after thirty years of seeing what we're trying to do in downtown, now we're taking a step back. And I believe all of you, or some of you, have people that sit on the E Board as your representative? No? None of you do? You just have one person?
Liaison.
Liaison? Yeah, well, maybe Curtis, maybe you can, there should be something done. There should have been public meetings. You know, this just got struck with people. Do you know, I have a lot of people that have told me they just found out about it yesterday? And they're so confused, they don't know what to do. So we really should, I don't know if City Council can do anything about that. I don't know where your power is, but I'm hoping that someone will speak up and help the little people this time, because there's a lot of little people out there that are going to suffer. All the senior citizens, I mean, we put the buildings down here, we want them down here, we have very few vacancies down here, and yet we don't want them to have transportation to go to their doctors. That's a shame. Or to go see their families. Or go to the mall. It's a shame, and we need some help here. And I think this group here can do a lot to help us. Please, you know, talk to the mayor's office, talk to the E. Let's have some meetings, let's figure out what is best. I worry about the crime on French Street. I know what's going on over there, and yet, and we have bad lighting. We have bad lighting from Sixth to Tenth. I understand we're going to get a couple new lights now. You know, we had those awful fluorescent lights out there, or LED lights, you know, that's not good. French Street doesn't have really great. And what are you going to do behind the Warner Theater? They can't have bus stops there, because they unload all their stuff for their shows. And all their buses, the kids get dropped off there. So that whole block, where are you going to put a bus stop? You know, they have the trucks come in, there are two or three, four trucks back there. Where's the bus going to go? So we have some real concerns about, you know, we're trying to make the Warner to be the great place in downtown Erie, and yet now we want to choke them off? I don't know. Let's think about this, guys. We need some help, and ladies. We really need some help on this one, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton.
Hi, Chris Maris, fifteen thirty West Twenty-Fourth Street, Erie, PA. Mr. President, members of council, Gaz and Jill. I follow things in the City of Erie, and I've been reluctant to come down before council, and some critical issues in the past. But this, the way this situation occurred, what happened, whatever happened to the sunshine laws? There's a possibility here that the sunshine laws may have been violated, potentially. The speakers before me, particularly the people that were physically challenged, those are the people that are most affected by this. That one or two blocks might as well be one or two miles in bad weather. Many of these people have handicaps, they're walkers, wheelchairs. And I'm a frequent rider of the E, and I can tell you this, that the men and women that drive those buses have that responsibility. I've observed do a very professional job, they're very courteous, and particularly pay attention to those who get on with wheelchairs and have handicaps. There's a platform that comes down in front of the bus, goes down, so the wheelchairs can come up. There's a couple areas up front of the bus that are reserved for those who have wheelchairs. The drivers take particular plane to make sure that those people are secured in those areas, so that when they make a turn, that their wheelchairs will not rock or roll and someone would be injured. They do a terrific job. They've got a big responsibility, and like many people, they're taken for granted. And Mel, by the way, is what I served with Mr. Witherspoon for a few years in council. Mel, it was always a pleasure serving with you. Always a pleasure. And it just, I know that the EMTA is an autonomous authority. We all know that. But was this decision made before the board? Was there a vote taken on it? I have no way of knowing that. Everybody was blindsided, including City Council. The bus drivers, the business people, everyone. What a shame. This isn't Russia or Communist China. This is the United States of America. Things should be done in an open fashion with the input of the public, and those directly and indirectly affected by this major change. Buses have been coming down State Street for decades, decades. As a matter of fact, back in the forties or fifties when Myron Prosser owned Erie Coach Company, the buses had plows on and helped plow the streets for the city, many years ago. That's a fact. So we have a good relationship with the, now they call it the E, and they're very professional and do a great job. But here, I just can't understand why this is being allowed to happen. I'm asking council today to look into this matter immediately. It's going to take effect, I don't know if you can stop it, this Saturday, June eighth, but hold it up, put the brakes on it. Let's take a better look at it. Let's look out for those who have special needs, and many of them can't be here today to speak. Please, consider this, and thank you so much for your consideration on a very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Certainly. Please, excuse me, excuse me. Please state your name and address.
My name is Steven Lunger, Jr., and I agree what this guy says. I just talked to one of the bus drivers that I've been going for the last four months to therapy. He does not agree with it, and I was at the bus stop early this morning, at seven-thirty this morning. Twenty people does not agree what's going on with the bus. Especially for the citizens that lives on State Street. They can't, in the winter time, on ice, walk from State Street all the way to Peach or French to catch a bus. That's why I came, and that's my opinion. I don't think it should happen, and half of the EMT don't agree with it neither. But I have to go catch my bus now, I just wanted to make my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Lunger. For the record, could you state your address, please?
Twenty-eleven East Eighteenth Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
No ordinances for first reading. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-four. An ordinance, amending official ordinance number eighty-two thousand and five, known as a zoning ordinance to the City of Erie by changing the classification of property located at McClellan and the Bayfront Highway, being approximately thirty-eight acres from C-two, C-three, Central Business District to C-two, General Business District, per the request of Vendetti Brothers Associates. Motion of Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Murfsky, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-four, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before we vote, I'd just like to indicate that I think that it would be beneficial for all concerned if the Vendetti Brothers, or Vendetti Law Firm, whichever is involved, were to have further conversations with the city planning department, community, and economic development folks. I think there are some opportunities to look at this in further detail and maybe come up with an even better proposal than this one. So while we're only voting on a first reading today, I really would encourage the Vendetti Brothers to seek further discussion with the parties. I spent some time with Brenda Sandberg recently, who had some, I think, very good ideas to consider relative to this, that would accomplish what the Vendettis are interested in accomplishing, but at the same time, deal with some of the concerns that we've heard expressed by the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood. So I would hope between now and our final vote in two weeks, that those meetings could be held, and possibly, as a result of that, have a better understanding of what's going to occur, and maybe come up with some alternatives that really are a better idea. So I would offer that as a, just a comment to the Vendettis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Mr. President?
Sure.
If I could, we had recently done a rezoning several months or two ago, and we had asked the developer to provide us a more detailed plan, or instead of just asking for the zoning, actually tell us what will be going in there. And we don't really have that. When we had the Vendettis here, they did present a plan that was back from the nineties, late nineties, when they had a prior zoning change. But, you know, personally, I'd like to have a little more detail on what they intend to place there before we change the zoning. So that's, you know, I don't know if we will be going back to them for that request, or if we can hold this vote up until we get a little more detail specific. They probably, you know, since they came to us, probably have a more recent plan than the late nineties that they could present if requested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Clem.
Mrs. Rancunzo?
No.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Murfsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? Motion is adopted on first reading, ye six, nays one. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-five, an ordinance appropriating the sum of fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars, forty-six cents from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the reimbursement of the purchase of EMS prevention supplies for the fire department. Motion, Mr. Murfsky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-five, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-six, an ordinance appropriating the sum of eighty-three thousand three hundred dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the reimbursement of the purchase of fire prevention supplies for the Bureau of Fire. Motion, Mr. Murfsky, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-six, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-seven, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred thousand fifty-eight dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, and providing for the expenditure thereof from the twenty thirteen Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority for the Bureau of Police. Motion, Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Rancunzo. The council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-seven, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-eight, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two million eight hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, four hundred forty thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars, seventy-four cents, reprogram funds from previous community development block grant years, and thirty thousand dollar program income for a total of three million three hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for the fiscal year twenty thirteen projects. It should be noted from the agenda that between the preparation of the agenda and yesterday, they were granted another ten thousand dollars, and I believe that it would make this the agenda item a total ten thousand more than it appears on the agenda. Motion, Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Jones, council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-eight, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Mr. President, just briefly on this item, Ms. Sandberg did speak to us in caucus and let us know that the allocation from HUD was a little bit more than anticipated, which was promising about a hundred thousand more than anticipated, and she was able to allocate those funds into the neighborhood centers primarily. So that was something I think the public should know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight thirty-nine, an ordinance appropriating the sum of six hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars from unappropriated anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and two hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars, eighty-five cents program income for a total of eight hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents for the home twenty thirteen projects. Motion, Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight thirty-nine, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council file ordinance fifteen thousand eight forty, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred three thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant twenty thirteen projects. Motion, Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number fifteen thousand eight forty, have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Mr. President? Yes. I'd like to move the balance of the agenda a second. Motion?
Any separations?
Separations.
Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Voting on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That takes you to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Quinzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things for the committee report today. I just wanted to clarify with the citizens who spoke to us quite a bit about the EMTA and the changes with regard to the bus routes. City Council, as has been mentioned, doesn't have jurisdiction over EMTA, and actually was not privy to any of the decision that was made regarding the routes. We are kind of at the receiving end of this information, as are you all, most of us have learned about it from the newspapers and the news reports. So we obviously are now aware and are as concerned as you are that these routes, moving them to off of State Street, is not a good idea. And we will begin to ask some questions and try to find out what has caused those changes, and whether or not there can be any reconsideration of those changes. But just, you know, in terms of making the decision, we had no vote, no input, nobody asked us, so, you know, and that puts us in a limiting position. And we could have certainly made some, raised some concerns had we known. The one question I would have, if the concern of traffic congestion that was raised as a reason for moving these routes has something to do with the bumpouts that were placed several years ago on State Street, that creates a situation where the bus has to go around the bumpout in order to pull over, and they're not pulling all the way against the curb because of those bumpouts. You know, if that's creating the congestion, obviously, we can reevaluate, we should really look at that issue rather than move the we can reevaluate, we should really look at that issue rather than move the bus routes. I think there are other solutions. So I just wanted the public to know that we have not had any decision-making power on this, but we certainly will look into it. The other question I had was schools getting out. Everyone knows the kids are going to be out of school in the next couple of days here. Ms. Beck, is the summer recreation schedule available for the students?
The summer recreation guide has been distributed to all of the Erie area schools. It has been in the newspaper, in the Erie Times News, and is available on the city of Erie websites and at many of the centers around town.
Right. So we would really encourage the citizens of Erie to take advantage of the summer rec program. Those are free opportunities for your kids to get involved in things like learning to swim, playing tennis, you know, there's some golfing opportunities, there's a bunch of different neat things. Plus, for senior citizens, there's concerts and whatnot. So, you know, I really encourage people to take advantage of that and make sure if you, can they go on the website if they didn't get a flyer at home or something?
Yes, it's absolutely available on the city of Erie website.
Okay, so if you did not get a summer recreation schedule, or you'd like to check it out, please check out the city of Erie website and make sure you take advantage of those summer programs. We need to make sure they're full and give that to our citizens.
Absolutely. I'm certain that there are some still available here at City Hall as well.
Okay, and there's also theater, too. I forgot to mention that. I know a lot of the young people like to participate in the theater as well in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. I attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting for the Southeast Hills Neighborhood Watch. It's the Mercierst area. We are getting together with the city and Mercierst and the citizens, working over the summer to come up with a resolution to some of the issues that are up there, and we're very optimistic that we can have a good plan in place coming into September when the kids come back to school. Just a couple reminders, Farmer's Market will be starting up soon. We have Farmer's Markets in Little Italy downtown Southeast Erie, and the GACAC offers farmer market vouchers for our seniors, and they're lower in the seniors. Now it's sixty years old. It's weird to think of my mom as a senior now, but sixty years or older and income requirements for city residents, those are going to be available June tenth for the farmer market vouchers at the Bayfront Convention Center from nine a.m. until four p.m. And if you want more information, you can call GACAC at four five nine four five eight one. And then finally, with the Convention Center Authority, remediation continues on the GAF property. You can see they have a big mound of dirt that they're digging into and cleaning up that area. And at the Erie Insurance Arena, it's currently closed. Right now, the basketball court is up at JMC Ice Arena. Since they don't use it for the summer, it's getting sanded and refinished so it'll look brand new for the opening of the arena, and new seating is being installed at the arena. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, as Ms. Rancunzo commented on the EMTA issue as liaison, I've been to, actually, because of the timing in my schedule, doesn't work well with the meetings, but I do keep in communication with Mr. Zelinski as Director of the E, or the EMTA. EMTA, we used to call it when I was a kid, you know, how'd you get to the mall? EMTA, which is kind of funny. But, yeah, when you talk about a surprise, I have to be a hundred percent honest, it was a surprise to me as liaison. I got a phone call concerning the issue maybe a day or so before our last meeting, but with very little detail. And for me, it was presented in such a way that I'm still not really sure how it came out and what, you know, what the details were and what the impetus was behind it. But quite honestly, I'm not crazy about it. I think, trying to be as objective as possible, I think there's some benefits on certain level, but I think the cons kind of far outweigh some of the few pros that may be involved in this move. I mean, my children ride the bus. My daughter texts me probably every day after school, Dad, my first bus was late, so I missed my second bus. So she's now forty-five minutes getting home later. And I'll be perfectly honest, not as a councilman, as a father, I would be concerned about her trying to catch the bus on Peach Street in the evening, in the winter, coming home from school by herself. She's sixteen years old. She's a tough cookie, don't get me wrong, but just as a father, that's a concern. I'm not judging it good or bad. I would have liked to have had more information. I'm sure all of us who are, although the autonomy of the authority is what it is, as you can tell in our sessions, we are a public venue for the concerns of the citizenry to be expressed. And so many people say, well, council, you can do something. And regrettably, we can't technically do anything as far as the decision-making process. But I think this, again, is a venue for individuals to bring their concerns. I don't know how we can deal with this. I don't think there's anything we can do to affect the change on the eighth, but I think that the discussion will not be as quiet as it has been through this medium of council and just through our concerns. Again, it may not change anything, but it would be good to know a little bit more besides the sign in the bus station or in the bus shelter that it says on the eighth it's changing. That would have been good to know, a little more detail and get some more opinion. And I ride the bus a lot of times. I rode the bus this morning with my daughter. It saves money. My wife, you know, she drows off to work and does her thing, and sometimes it's just a nice convenience. I mean, I get dropped off on Seventh Street, you know, it's kind of nice. And so, I mean, again, convenience is an issue, but I think it's bigger than that. There should be at least some dialogue on something, this community impacting. I think it should have been more public dialogue, but I think that will come out of the next several weeks, we'll get more information. I would like to, often we have citizens who talk about a lack of minority, and I don't like to term minority, a lack of black and Latino and even women working in construction jobs around the city and doing any of the streetscaping work and all those types of things. And I think there is room, I know that there is room for improvement in that area, but I think sometimes we look at the big projects and we forget the smaller projects that have significant impact on our community. For example, I've been, you know, I live on Sixth Street, and I go down Eighth Street every day, and all of the curb cuts that are being done on West Eighth Street are being done by, I didn't see one white person on any of those sites. And again, this is not black or white, but for the sake of the dialogue that often comes to us, there, I think there's more being done as far as the inclusivity of the workforce in construction and contracting than sometimes we realize. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But I think we need to also acknowledge the fact that there are black-owned, women-owned, Latino-owned businesses that are doing great work in our community, and I think that needs to be highlighted, and it's not just, you know, a bunch of white guys got the jobs. I think it's bigger than that, and I think there's a lot more diversity and inclusion in our community than what we hear often. Also, our last meeting, we had some discussion, and we were able to transfer a small portion of money from our general city council budget to be available to kind of serve as seed money to help to develop a summer work program for the youth in our community. Someone mentioned seven thousand dollars is not a lot of money, in the grand scheme of things, it isn't. But again, it was an attempt to provide seed money, to show that the public and other businesses in the private sector, that we are able and willing to take, you know, take a chance and invest and put money where our mouth is as a council, and we were able to effectively do that, and all seven of us support that venture. I was going to do a Mr. McDonald for about thirty seconds and take a little extra time, but, I'm killing you, Mr., sorry, Mr. President, I'm sorry. I was talking slow this morning, that EMTA thing got me fired up, I'm trying to control myself. But, so we do have a lot of research, and the proposal is done. It should be on your SharePoint sites if it may have popped up while you're sitting here. And there's a few more details that are being worked out as far as the conduit organization, the nonprofits, so that private sector groups can get the tax benefit and incentive for contributing. So that is, that's well on its way. Please look at that and critique it and get back to me at your earliest convenience. And finally, a young lady who is relatively new, is a transplant to our community from the Harrisburg area, young Kristi Moore is working with me as an intern, and she is, when you read it, you're going like, courtesy, I didn't know you were so smart. Probably not as smart as the proposal will read, but she's been working with me diligently for the last several weeks to make sure that we had sort of a research-based proposal to make sure that council is comfortable and the community that are going to be contributing are comfortable with those resources and where it's going. So that's my very long overtime report. I appreciate this extra time, Mr. President.
We'll see what happens next time. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of my reports for liaison reports for the Erie Zoo, a couple of updated items coming here. June eighth is our equipment day. For anyone with kids, it's a great day to bring the kids out to, you know, jump on all the diggers and all the other heavy equipment there, a great thing. The lion and polar bear exhibit renovations are still in the progress. They're seeking further funding. Funding's not secured yet, but that'll definitely go forward in the future. For Erie Redevelopment Authority, there was great news yesterday. Yesterday was announced that the authority has received a three million dollar federal grant for moved lead from more than two hundred homes countywide over the next three years. The funding will also help raise public awareness of the dangers of lead poisoning. The Redevelopment Authority also approved the amended developers agreement for Union Square. This agreement was signed by the ERA and the city and is in Midtown Partners, Fourth River's hands for final signature. Upcoming meeting, McBride-Videuct Public Meeting is coming up on July fifteenth at six thirty at East High School. And just a few comments about the EMTA relocation to Peach and French Street. I also did not know about this proposed change, although I read it in the paper. I do see that we do need community engagement and some type of study kind of saying why we're doing this, but just to reroute it on Peach and French Street, I'm just kind of looking at the physical space for the shelters. Is it there? Is there smaller width of sidewalks? And of course, the shelters are not built yet. Proper lighting levels, a lot of the things that people have already brought up during the comment period, concerns for safety, then is going to add to the congestion on these streets. But in the end, does this decision improve service? Is it a benefit to our community? I'd like to see if they could possibly delay this decision and also present information to council and the city kind of saying that why these changes should occur. I don't know if it's possible, Mr. Clem, to request that in writing by council or not, but definitely in representing the people, I think it's very important. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, that request has already been made, and actually, I spoke with Dennis this morning and ended up having to go out. He was out, he's out of town currently. So at our next session, he's willing to avail himself to all of council individually or collectively concerning the tangible tactical, you know, process of how this is going to work and what the thought process behind it was, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Evans?
A couple liaison reports. First, Port Authority, at the last meeting, I think the most significant thing was that it was announced that they received additional grant funding to be able to provide an extension to the rail line in the Don John Marine property so that they can unload steel further north in the fabrication areas. And that's important because, number one, there's a major lake freighter that's still moored at Don John, which we don't normally see. In the summer, they normally are out plying their trade, if you would, but this boat is going to be rebuilt significantly, and so that's an important new piece of work for the Don John folks. The other thing is they're building another lake freighter. The one that was launched last year was the first American-made lake freighter to be launched on the Great Lakes in a couple decades. So it was really a coup for Erie that we were able to have that built here, and they're working on another one. So the employment at the port is up as a result. Normally, that employment is quite seasonal, and this year it's going to be year-round because of the increased work. Housing Authority, at the last meeting, they announced that their score from HUD in terms of meeting all of HUD's requirements and the quality of the housing that's provided, the resident satisfaction, et cetera, has increased once again in 2012 over 2011, and so they're very pleased with the reports that they've received about the quality of the services they provide. The other thing that I found amazing is that a number of us attended an open house there several months ago when they opened the new dental and nursing facility at John and Garden Apartments. And I saw in the most recent report from the Gannon Nursing Center that just since it opened several months ago, they've had twenty-four hundred and sixty occasions of service, almost twenty-five hundred occasions of service in the nursing center alone. So I think that's just outstanding. I attended the Neighborhood Watch Council meeting a couple of weeks ago at Blasco, and one thing I think all the Neighborhood Watch groups are aware of, but if people missed the meeting, the United Way is providing a matching grant program this summer for Neighborhood Watch groups that plan to have a summer event to promote their watch group. So there's matching funds required, so the local group has to come up with some matching funds. But United Way is providing five hundred dollars, up to five hundred dollars per watch group for a summer event. I think that's significant. If you have any questions about that, I'd encourage you to contact the United Way. I attended the Greater Cockwa Watch Meeting last week, and the mayor, police chief, and Bob Sambrook, Assistant DA, all spoke about the coordinated law enforcement activities for all the Neighborhood Watch groups. And also Sue Mack, District Justice Sue Mack, spoke about the restructuring of the district justice areas as we move from having, I think, six district justice areas in the city to five. So there was some discussion about that. And finally, just to piggyback on my colleague Dave Brennan's comments, I had a chance to attend the press conference yesterday on the lead remediation program, which he referenced in his remarks, and the newest example of that on East Seventh. If you get a chance to drive by three thirty-seven East Seventh, you ought to do it. It's just amazing the transformation of that house. And, you know, the homeowner there, who's a single mother of two, has been a homeowner there since nineteen ninety-eight. So this is a woman who's a very active contributor in the community, a very responsible citizen, who saw the dangers of lead to her two young children and was able to qualify to have this work done in her home, and it's just phenomenal what they did. And it was announced that thus far in the five different grants, they will have affected over a thousand houses in the city of Erie in terms of removing lead and improving the housing quality for the people who live there, particularly children. And I thought that was just a grand victory. So if you get a chance to look at that house, you ought to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the records, that the EMTA authority is probably the authority that we as council have the least power to insist, instruct, demand that they do something. But we as council do have that power as a group, as a unit, to draft whatever notation is necessary. What I would like the administration and the legal department to look into, can I design a resolution to forbid everyday commercial buses to go on our streets? Can we do that? I don't want to go any further until I know I can do that. If so, then that will be done. And I have a personal reason. I believe in voices for independence. I work in the Renaissance Center, so I'm up and down State Street, so I see the individuals struggling every day on State Street, forbid Peach and French. And I would like to see a study done on traffic congestion. How much traffic do we have on Peach and French currently? Appreciate if administration could look into that. Ms. McDonald mentioned today about his situation with the Erie Police Department. I have met with the chief, and I met a, and I forgot his name, but the chief has a person on duty that his job is to work on attitude of the police department. But anytime you're looking at instituting change, it will take time, and in some cases, it will never change. We are individuals, we grew up a certain way, we like some people, we don't like some people. But... But we do have someone in the police department, and his job is to train, to meet, and deal with the human aspects of all individuals, regardless of the race, color, creed, natural origin. And on the other hand, the police job is not an easy job. And that's one thing we have to do. It was mentioned that we had an increase in the CDBG, another issue that Mr. McDonald was concerned about constantly. But the community centers are receiving some of the additional monies that we receive from the CDBG grant. So Ms. McDonald, city administration, had heard your cry and heard your plea, and they have done what they could do for the community centers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Just to follow up on that note, they're giving additional, originally, there was no money scheduled for the centers, and they're actually, each center is going to get fifteen thousand dollars. So it was nice that the government came through for us on that, that we weren't expecting, and it helps us here on council also. Naturally, I don't think there's anybody on council here who's a little blindsided with that EMTA's decision. Grant you, they can make schedule changes whenever they want, they can change bus routes, they can, you know, one day, you have signs out there, this is not a bus stop. So I think as a council, we wish there was a little more transparency in this one, where we didn't get blindsided as well as the citizens a little bit. Whether there's anything that can be done at this point on our end, they can hear our cries, just like they can hear the citizens' cries. Whether that will change anything is yet to be seen, but I'm sure everybody will do a little due diligence here and see what kind of studies were done with the congestion and how it's going to improve things, whether it be Peach or French Street. One other item, city invests over a hundred thousand dollars every summer to our youth programs. Once again, like I do every year, I challenge the parents, and if the grandparents are taking care of the kids, I challenge the grandparents, take advantage of this. It gives the youth some sense of need where to go on those summer days when schoolers out. They get breakfast, they get lunch, I mean, and it gives them something to do instead of just hang out. So parents, please, please, for the sake of the kids, the city's trying to do their part and invest a good chunk of money, follow up and do your part. And if you're working, it gives the kids a place to go. It just, it'd make for a better community. With that, thank you, and Mr. Kwiatkowski?
Yes, Mr. President. We attended the O and E pension meeting. All the funds are doing well. Total fund is now at 204.1 million, and the water reserve account is in good shape and growing. We also attended the Southeast Erie branch of the Neighborhood Watch, and as we continue to do so. And just to note that we also received many complaints about the bus changes, too, also on taxpayer hotline and at my office. I think the way they handled it was unacceptable to elected officials and the public, and I think we need to, you know, at least give the public the assurance that, you know, that we're on board. It's a little hard to be blindsided as elected official. That's not be my last comment.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Good morning. Just want to let everyone know that the mayor's disability roundtable has reached out to those in the community to assure that they have training for using the French and Peach Street routes. I don't know when that training will be taking effect, but we have made an effort to make sure that the people who use the routes, who use EMTA, are certainly trained to use it safely. Just wanted to make that clarification. Perry 200, if anybody attended the parade a couple of weeks ago, just want to thank everybody on the committee. It was a fantastic event, a hundred thousand people that came out downtown, so it was very well done. The first cruise in, the first cruise town Erie is this Friday evening. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate so we can have all the car enthusiasts come out and line the streets of downtown. And also want to mention that the Erie Downtown Partnership kicks off their first block party this Thursday evening. Those will be planned Thursdays throughout the summer. We don't have the exact dates or locations, but they're, of course, available on the websites, and hopefully, it will be a good summer full of events. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Mr. Clem?
City council now adjourned at 10:44 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Ran Kunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon. Yes? Jim 1-2. Jim 1. Hate those lights.